So welcome everyone to our public hearing. What I'd like to do is start out with the ground rules for tonight and then also introduce a few people that are supporting this effort and then we'll move to a place to the flag and begin the public hearing. So there's a sign up sheet that's available for speakers. You should have found it when you came in the door. Debbie Clark, Christine Wilber is available and you can find her to sign up. I will receive these sheets and I will call people in order that they've signed up so that's how you will know. I will let you know who's next and whoever next should come up to the front or get themselves in a position where they can quickly get to the microphone so that they can speak next, give us enough time to allow everyone that wants to speak the opportunity. There is a three-minute time limit and you will have, we have time as a front that will let you know when there's one minute, 30 seconds left and then a stop sign. We ask you to respect the three-minute limit so that everyone has an equal chance at speaking. The person will be addressing only the board and not the audience although you're speaking toward the audience so they can hear you and see your face. You should state your name. It's not a requirement that you state where you live but the board is interested in knowing that if you would share that as far as which town you're from. The purpose of the hearing is to just address one specific topic which is the proposed local law to prohibit natural gas and petroleum exploration, extraction activities and disposal of natural gas, petroleum extraction, exploration and production waste. Comments on or about the content of this local law and your support or opposition are appropriate. This is a decision before the town board and that's the reason for being here tonight. This is not a time for debate so please share what you want with the town board to consider when they are deliberating about this local law. Character assassination is not acceptable of any individual. Derogatory marks, profanity, interrupting a speaker or speaking over another one holding the floor are considered disorderly conduct and will not be tolerated and will result in me asking you to first desist and then leave if necessary. The town board has decided to stop the public hearing at 9:30 which time the board will consider whether to continue to hear a few more comments or set a future date for more people to address the board. So I want to acknowledge John Reed who is videotaping this so we'll have a record of it in video and also Josh and Eric Anderson who are up front. They're our timekeepers and you'll be seeing them wave at you as you speak. So now if you would join me with a place to the flag then we'll begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So Nellie Farham, she's signed up first so she's ready and then Lincoln Adams is on deck.
My name is Nellie Farham. I live on White Church Road on 100 acres of land. Almost a year ago on September 27th, 2011, I wrote a letter to Governor Cuomo and I specifically said to him, quoting back to him what he said, which was, "My point all along is to make the decision on hyper fracking based on the facts and on the science. This is not an issue to be decided by politics or emotion." The specific question I asked him was what the facts and scientific justification were for protecting the New York City and Syracuse watersheds and not our own personal wells. And I ended with, "I'd appreciate an answer to this specific question concerning the differences and level of protection for the New York City watershed and the Syracuse watershed compared to the private wells on individual New York families living in rural areas where the industrialization of horizontal fracking will be permitted. I'm interested in the facts and the science that support that decision." So in less than a week I got an answer from him. He said, "Dear Dr. Farham, thank you for sharing your concerns. I'm always happy to receive input as I work towards making New York the Empire State once again." I kind of thought maybe we were going to invade Connecticut or something, but anyway. Feedback from New Yorkers is vital to a responsive and effective government and I appreciate your reaching out to my office. I forwarded your correspondence to the appropriate members of my staff. Please be assured that they will follow up should they have any questions and/or require any additional information." And I never heard from them again. But in fact, over the last year, there have been many, many scientific papers have appeared and insignificant numbers in a diverse array of peer-reviewed reviewed journals such as the Journal of Physical Research, Science, Climate Change, Frontiers and Ecology, Proceedings of the National Academy of Science. And these studies, which are scientific studies, present well-analyzed scientific data that show that high-volume horizontal hydro fracking in multiple states where it currently is occurring and being carried out poses dangers to our water, to our health, to our property values, to our ability to ensure ourselves, to our local economies such as farming and tourism and to our rural landscapes. So Governor Cuomo and his staff cannot present a response to letters such as mine because data based on facts and on science now clearly document the many hazards and dangers associated with this industrialization. So it's not surprising I never received a final response. So by passing this ban, we will be joining three other towns in Tompkins County strengthening our solidarity as a county and as a state to use the power of home rule to keep fracking out of our environment. I very much support this ban and thank you for considering it. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Lincoln Adams and James Cornell is on deck.
I'm Lincoln Adams. I live in the town of Carolina. And when this issue first came up, it came up years ago and we started looking and I did not trust what I was hearing so I went and researched myself. I've been to Pennsylvania many times. I've been on drilling rates. I've looked at it honestly and openly. I think this is wrong. Before me, frankly, I'm embarrassed to say that comes from Carolina and Tompkins County. Here we are, we live in the shadows of two institutions of higher education whose sole purpose is to educate, to find solutions to problems and to move forward. And yet, here we are, we have a town board who is chosen to select the facts that they look at and live in fear. I choose not to live in fear. Before me, I have a town board that honestly I believe are hypocrites. This room and that parking lot is filled with cars. We are all energy users. We can't just pick and choose what we do. It is here, it is something that can be done responsibly. And interestingly enough, there's an article here from the Associated Press and it's talking about the possibility of putting wind farms offshore in Lake Erie. And I'll read you a couple of sentences that strikes home to me. Offshore wind projects have been proposed elsewhere in the region including Michigan and New York State stirring fierce debate. Critics say they would ruin spectacular vistas, lower shoreline property values and harm birds and fish. The same argument that many of these people here are using, so you can't have your cake and eat it too. It's all there. I also see a town board that's afraid of change. This country was built on change. If it weren't, we'd still be walking, riding horses and heating with wood. Change is inevitable. It comes and it can be done responsibly. And the last thing I would say is, you are elected officials. You're supposed to lead. We'll lead, but don't just pick the facts that you want to facts. Choose them all and make sure that your decision is the right one for all. People like myself don't come out. We don't feel like we have to come and fight for our inalienable landowner rights. I ask you, if you go ahead with this ill-advised ban, drilling's not going to come here for some time and I don't know how you know more than what the officials for the DEC know. They've been looking at this. There's a 4,000-page document coming. It is premature without having all of this data before you to in-exclusively shut it out. This is improper and wrong and I ask you to be leaders for all of us, not just the squeaky wheels.
So James Cornell is on deck or coming up and then we have Dory Lyle on deck.
I'm James Cornell. I live on Baylor Road. I was going to give my three minutes to Pete after hearing Mr. Adams talk. I decided to get up here and talk with someone. He did a good job. This town board, like Mr. Barber here said in the paper, they got their people in to get this ban. The only way these people got in, these two people that got in, they weren't more qualified than the two people that were in there. They got in because they were anti-fracking. That's the only way the two people got in. Now, Mike and Barber helped them an awful lot. Now they're going for something that is unreal. Take all of our rights away from us as landowners. We have one town board number here that doesn't even own any land. You're not sent here. And it's the contempt I've had for this town board. I've went to several meetings and all I've heard is these same people get up and run down misinformation, lies, which half-truth is a lie no matter how you look at it. And I get up and speak, I'm awful nervous, can't say what I really feel and want to say. But Mr. Adams did a good job telling this town board what they should do. Here a while ago, we had a noise ordinance that wanted to go through and it was before the election of the two officials that got out. Mr. Barber said that that person had the right, he had two complaints I think it was, that person had the right to have this law. Well, I'm one person. I don't want this law. Do I have the same rights of that person that you were fighting for? Thank you.
So Dory Lyle is speaking and after that is Pete DeBoer.
Hi, I'm Dory Lyle. I'm a two and a half year resident of Carolina. I live on Baylor Road. And I just went to say thank you to the board for considering the ban and working towards it and all the hard work you've done. I moved to Carolina because I actually didn't want to live in Pennsylvania. I was born and raised in Pennsylvania. Long-term resident of North Central and Western Pennsylvania, worked very hard in public health and in medicine throughout Pennsylvania. And I have seen the effects of three booms and then mineral extraction declines and the impact it had on local communities. You only have to go to places like Bradford, Pennsylvania, to Titusville, to Clarion County, to Clearfield County if you want to see real Appalachia and real downtrodden. The people who have made and had the money in those regions from Deep Hole or who are taking it with strip mining now, they leave when that money comes in and they don't put it back into the communities. And what's left in those communities is a lot of poverty, is a lot of very sad people. People leave those communities at great numbers as young people because there's nothing left for them there. And I actually moved here because I wanted to avoid that and I would hate to see this region in 40 or 50 years become like some of those areas. And I don't mean to badmouth my old stomping grounds because they were beautiful Appalachian areas at one time and now they're not. So again, I thank you very much from more of a not-so-scientific point of view, more of a qualitative point of view. Thank you.
Pete DeBoer is speaking. Next on deck is Charles Metler.
Good evening. My name is Pete DeBoer. I live here in Brooktondale. There are times in life when a person must look at a complex situation and try to discern the ethical way forward and this is not always easy. There is nothing inherently wrong with using natural resources. We all have a right to survive and to prosper. But I think the essence of the question is about balance. The earth has a tremendous ability to regenerate and heal itself. But if you push the balance too far, you damage the environment, you hurt the whole system. Without balance and harmony over the long term, humanity cannot survive. Hydro fracking is clearly and blatantly grossly out of balance with nature. It is an extreme fossil fuel which sets humanity on the incorrect road ironically just as we are beginning to see the ugly truth of global warming emerging before us. A no to hydro fracking is actually a yes. A yes to solar, to wind, to geothermal, to the promise of science and the possibility of a real energy revolution. On the local level, I believe that a landowner does not in fact have the right to extract resources if in doing so it threatens all of us with air and water pollution and a destruction of our rural way of life, replacing it with industrialization of vast areas of land and changing the very nature of our society. The short-term economic gain of hydro fracking will vanish and when your water is ruined, your gas wells are fracked and refracked and refracked and then maybe they'll go down to the Utica Shale and frac some ore. Your pristine farmland will be devalued or potentially worthless if you're one of the unlucky few whose water is ruined. As large landowners, you know that the land and the water is everything. So think very carefully about what you would really like to leave your grandchildren and even their grandchildren. I'll leave you with a lyric by the poet John Prine from his song Paradise. "Oh Daddy, won't you take me back to Mullenburg County down by the Green River where paradise lays? Oh, I'm sorry, my son, but you're too late in asking. Mr. Peabody's coal train has hauled it away."
So Charles Metler is speaking and then Jack Hooker is on deck.
My name is Charles Metler. I'm a resident since 1958. I live on Blackman Hill Road and I think that we ought to protect our water. I've got a nice deep well, it's 85 foot, you've got water down 15 feet and it's nice pure water. I don't think we should contaminate it. Water is for our kids, our future. You do have the right to do it with the minerals underneath, but don't contaminate it. Don't let them ruin it. Town board elected the two other officials on there for a reason. I elected the two other officials on there to protect, help protect our rights. They're there for a reason. Thank you.
Jack Hooker's at the podium and Jim Gurlidge is on deck.
I'm Jack Hooker. I'm a landowner on White Church Road. I think we've all heard it before. I just want to ask the board to vote for a ban. Thank you.
Jim Gurlidge is taking the podium and John Pampers on deck.
I'm Jim Gurlidge, Ellis Hollow Road. I commend the board for its expeditious work on the formulation of a law that prohibits gas and petroleum exploration, extraction and development in the town of Carolina. When the draft law was published, I expressed my reservations to the board about the hardship exemption. Subsequently, I've learned that such an exemption is required by New York State law. However, that has not diminished my concern about its use here. Board members realize that one of the most important issues on the minds of town residents is the potential risk to water supplies because in the exemptions section, Part B, Paragraph 4, quote, "threat to water quality," unquote, is characterized as being unacceptable. This wording is strong but somewhat vague and maybe on purpose. But if an actual case comes before you, it will be very helpful to affected landowners who have specific information about the proposed project such as a map to scale showing the location of proposed gas wells and existing water wells, aquifers and streams. Please consider including such a requirement. Finally, I thank former town and planning, town board and planning committee members who under the leadership of Supervisor Barber developed a comprehensive town plan without which the current action would have been much more difficult.
John Pampers taking the podium and Edwards is on deck.
I'd like to start by saying that this entire process has reaffirmed my belief most firmly in the democratic process and the exchange of values in a polite and courteous manner. I single out Lynn Adams who may at times have felt put upon perhaps...
Never, John, never.
Perhaps a little bit.
Here's the thought.
...whose polite decorum has been outstanding and I thank all the members of the board for listening to this. There are a lot of problems with fracking. There's a possibility of well contamination, there's the virtual certainty of noise pollution, air pollution, tens of thousands of trucks converging on Utica to get water from Hugle Lake are going to create traffic jams, hazards on our roads and highway problems. But above all that, far beyond that, I draw to the board's attention that to me, the most elemental concern is the quality of life issue. I may lose value on my house as wells are drilled around it, but most importantly, I live down on Flatiron Road. I walk it, sometimes I run it. There's a couple that walk their dog on it almost every day. There's another couple, two other couples who walk it almost every day. Pickup trucks can meet on Flatiron Road, stop facing each other and chat for 15 minutes because it is a beautiful place. The catch is preserved this spring at one of the rarest birds seen in the Hugle Lake Basin and four years ago had a bird seen on it that has been seen in New York only twice in the last 20 years. It's an exceptional natural preserve that draws lots of people for hiking. The east side of Flatiron Road is almost fully leased. It is at the junction of major highways. It is a flatland highly eligible and likely to be a pumping station, a center of wells and pipeline. No one would take their kids to teach them how to ride a bicycle on roads with 1,000 trucks holding 300 gallons of, 3,000 gallons of water going up and down there a day. The recreational value, the aesthetic value, the quality of life associated with the community that we have now would be totally gone with fracking. And you know, I don't care what precautions you may have to reduce the other deleterious effects. You can't escape the fact that if you turn this into an industrial center, the quality of life that we all enjoy will be gone. And I commend the board and I actually do commend this entire community for its respect to the democratic process in reaching the decision and membership of the board that we now have. Thank you all very, very much.
Edwards is taking the podium and Sandy Padoca is next on deck.
My name is Edwards. I live on Ellis Hollow on the Caroline side. I have lived here for a long, like a number of people here have lived here, but I still feel very strongly about this community because I've decided to retire here and help raise my grandchildren here and it means a lot to me. We've heard a lot about how important the, how safe everything is going to be when things are drilled and how responsible industry is. I can tell you, industry is only interested in one thing. They're interested in making a profit and they will do as little as possible as long as they can maximize their profit. That's the truth. I've worked in corporations, I've worked on the regulatory side of things and I can tell you, industry is interested in making profit for their stockholders. That's all. And so I think it's really important that when we think about whether or not we want ban or not ban drilling here, that we take things slowly and the ban will allow us to do that. This isn't forever. This may not, this may not be forever, but until we can be sure that it can be done safely and I'm not convinced, and you look at what's happening to communities all over this country, North Dakota, Colorado, Wyoming, it's happening all over, Pennsylvania. This causes tremendous harm to a community when they come in because it's a boom or bust sort of development. And that's the way the industry wants it because that's how they can make the most amount of money. And I really want to thank the board for the deliberate process that they've gone through. We've heard from all of the town members and the various views. Sure, there are a lot of people that would like to have drilling right now. They need it. I understand that, but it's not the right thing. And fortunately, New York has what a lot of states don't have, it has home rule. And home rule is what's going to help us put this off for a while until it can be done safely. And home rule means that it depends upon elections. And we have an election. We did elect new members to the board and it was because they were on, they wanted to slow this process down. And I think this is what needs to be done now. We can address this maybe in 10 or 20 years. Maybe that will be the time. I don't know. Maybe five years. But I think I really want to urge the board to vote this ban in. Thank you.
Sandy Padoca is taking the podium and Pete Hoy is on deck.
Hi, I live in Brooktondale. I'm Sandy. My husband and I moved to Caroline 18 years ago because it was beautiful and because we could live surrounded by birds and other wildlife, but we didn't know many other residents at the time. But finding drilling has connected us with people in our town like Irene Reiser who share our vision of living in a small vibrant rural community. A community that supports its local farmers and other tradespeople like the Snows, Brookton's Market and Hugle Pure Organics as they try to make environmentally friendly business choices. A community with robust social services like the food pantry and its gardens and clothing giveaways managed by the amazing Pat Brown and others. A community that tries to do its part to counter global warming by getting its energy from renewable resources like the wind and sun. And Don Barber and Dominic Frigella have been very great leaders in this regard. Through Rouse meetings and public hearings and petitioning, I have seen that it is not just a few people who share this vision of our community. It seems that most people do. I know not everyone, but many people do. Like never before in our history, I think many Caroline townspeople have come together over the past several years to clearly say that they do not want to be an industrial sacrifice zone. They know that although a few people and some giant corporations might make a lot of money by exploiting all of us for shale gas, most of us would lose big time. I think our property values would decrease, we might lose our mortgages and our ability to sell our homes, our serenity, as people have said, would be broken by an endless stream of huge trucks rolling through and our health would be threatened from air and water pollution. And let me just mention one very recent health study in Pennsylvania. Someone looked at more than 20,000 births and they found that women living within one and a half miles of a Marcellus well that had been drilled were 25% more likely to have a low birth weight baby than those living that close to a permitted well that had not yet been drilled. And it's common knowledge that low birth weight babies have more health issues as babies and also later on in life. And that's just one small thing people are finding so far. Unfortunately, we still might experience some of the negative effects of drilling if neighboring communities don't ban fracking. So our next mission, if we pass a ban here, must still be to convince politicians in Albany that no area deserves to be thrown under the fracking bus. I think we must look at what is good for the vast majority of the people, not just a small number of people. I thank the town board for working to get a ban in place in Caroline and of course I beg each of you to vote for this ordinance. With this ban behind us, I hope, and a community of people who have gotten to know each other better and who now know that the majority share a vision of living in a nurturing rural and environmentally responsible community and who know that they have the energy and the ability to work together and make things better for all, I just want to say, just think what we could accomplish next.
Pete Hoy is taking the podium and there is Alice Colver. Pete Hoy is taking the podium, and Mary Alice Kobler is on deck.
I'm afraid I'm going to sound like a downer after Sandy there. I have a hard time with them. Don't think I could quite match her enthusiasm. I don't quite feel the celebratory mood that some of the folks are sharing tonight. But it seems like we're completing Book Two of a trilogy here in the town of Caroline. Book One was completed on election night. We all know what happened then. Book Two is going to be completed when the Board, I assume, votes in favor of this ban. I don't know what's going to happen with Book Three. That kind of remains to be seen. Somebody asked me out here tonight what I was going to talk about, and I said, "Well, when I figure it out, I'll let you know." Just a couple of random thoughts, a couple of comments, maybe. The gentleman spoke earlier about the coal train haul a little way there, the John Prine song. I remember that song. That's interesting because to the extent that gas is extracted, coal will not be. And I always thought that coal extraction was one of the rudest environmental things that could be done, but we're not hearing that now. Somebody talked about balance and suggested that a ban is a way to find some balance. I thought that's what the moratorium was, but a ban seems to be more extreme than a balanced approach to, you know, regulation and being careful. But this has all been said before. One of the things that I'm starting to pick up on a little bit is I walk around and I talk to people, and they talk to me. And this isn't just people who've been on my side of the camp, you know, the pro-landowners, anti-fracking type folks, but even some folks who I know didn't vote for me and who would rather not see drilling here. But they're starting to notice some of the inconsistency and some of the more extreme ideology that seems to be working its way out. The inconsistency being, you know, as Lincoln pointed out, you know, "We all drive, we all use this stuff, but let's just not take it from here." And the inconsistency, the folks who are crying about the windmills up in Lake Erie. I thought that was very telling. And the ideology, I always kind of suspected that there was much more of an ideological reason behind rows and a lot of the folks who were coming out opposed to the drilling and the fracking here in Caroline and that, to an extent, the fears of pollution and truck noise and all that was, you know, kind of the stalking horse for that. And I think that that's becoming a little bit more evident now. And I hope that this Town Board is not being duped by that. I mean, if the concerns are genuinely that the town is going to be hurt, then it's a very illegitimate thing for you guys to be taking it seriously and even acting upon it. But if you're being used to further some sort of an ideology that should be taking place at the state or the national level, and this sort of grassroots trying infiltrations the last speaker mentioned, gosh, now maybe we can go to some other towns and get it happening here, you know? Just watch out that you're not being duped. And like I say, Book Three will be out soon. I can't wait to read it.
Mary Alice Kobler is at the podium, and Bill Padoca is on deck.
I have spoken several to many times, but I felt like I wanted to speak again tonight, mostly to thank our Town Board, everyone of you, for your diligent, courageous work. I also want to thank our community because I know energies and thoughts run high, and I really value our community, whether I agree with everyone or not. I really, really value our process here. I have been reading for years now about the hydro fracking issues, and I have a couple of questions. So if it's so safe, why did they work so hard to be excluded from the Clean Air and Clean Water Act? And why do they, if you sign a lease, you have to sign a disclaimer so that you can't talk to anybody if you are poisoned? So those are really big issues that nobody, you know, they just lively go by. It's never been done safely. There's huge risks that always come true to some. And when I value our community, I don't want my well fracked. I don't want your well fracked. I don't want any of us poisoned, and I don't want my grandchildren poisoned in the next generation. And I don't feel like because I own land, I have the right to poison everyone else. I'm not an island. I use the roads that we all pay for in taxes. We're a community. And let's keep acting like one, and let's not frac. Please, please pass this ban. The community, you are representing the community. The community wants this as a whole.
Bill Padoca is taking the podium, and Anne Bane is on deck.
Thanks, yeah, I am Bill Padoca, and I also live in Caroline, just over on Caroline Depot Road. And I want to thank you to the Board for responding to the concerns of this community concerning hydraulic fracturing and taking up this issue and considering it so carefully. And I all put in quite a bit of time on that, and I thank all of you for that. It may help the evening go a little faster, or else no, everyone will have a chance to speak. And so I'd like to do something we also did once last year, just to help demonstrate to the Board that they are acting with the strong support of many residents of the community. And if all the residents in the audience who favor this ban being passed, residents of Caroline, please raise your hand. Okay, so I'm going to report for the Board. I know there's just over a hundred people here. I'm guessing there's a good eight or ninety more hands up there. So I think you have a lot of support in the community for what you're doing. I just want to clarify a couple of things. I know people are probably talking about, you know, slowdown, we don't know what's going to happen, and the appeal of all these legal cases. Strictly, the driving case has not been appealed. I want to make sure that the Board is clear on that. The company involved filed paperwork to preserve their right to appeal the case, but they have not actually filed an appeal. They have not appealed the case itself. We don't really know what's going to happen. They've had nine months, they've used five of them sitting on their hands, they haven't yet filed an appeal. So no reason to wait because they don't even know what's even going to happen. So I appreciate the fact that you've gone ahead and considered this issue now. I also want to remind the Board that landowner rights dating back to law in England have never included the right to injure one's neighbors. And so again, I appreciate the fact that you're willing to take this issue, which I know is contentious because some people feel it is stepping on their rights. But I remind them, I remind the Board, that you do have that ability and authority because no one else really does. Someone has to step in and help protect the community. Finally, just a couple of quick points. One reason the Board can and should act is that there are many gaping holes in even this now four thousand-page SGI F. As everyone knows, there is no health impact study. Concerns have been expressed recently about the amount of radon will be in Marcellus gas and the impact that will have on cancer rates in areas where the gas is used, particularly in New York City. That's not even in the SGI F at all. There's significant gaps in the analysis. So in sum, thank you for taking this up and looking out for, I mean, I never make everybody happy, but I do appreciate the fact that you're looking out for all town residents, whether they're large landowners, small landowners, or even rent property.
Anne Bane is taking the podium, and Hush Murray is on deck.
My name is Anne Bane. I moved to Caroline in nineteen eighty-three and built a house here over a period of years after going to law building school in British Columbia. I had helped doing so from friends and neighbors all over the spectrum of this issue, and there's a lot of good story there, the details of which I'll spare you. I only want to say that everyone who lives here has a depth of feeling and a story about how they came to Caroline and put down roots, whether they inherited land and livelihood or were brought here by a job, academic or otherwise, or simply chose to live here because the area is beautiful and so far, safe. In petitioning for a ban on hydro fracking, I met many people who've recently moved to the area, and some of these are doing a terrific job of caring for their own homes and extending their hearts into this community. Landowners of any size and all other residents have an obvious stake in what happens here. Though few persons would be affected in any positive sense by gas extraction, everyone will share the costs, and so each person should have equal sway in making this decision. This is an issue for us to handle democratically, no matter how many underhanded, undemocratic, and environmentally injurious means the industry managed to put in place before there was even any talk of enriching the small population of large landowners in the town. We need to admit that no single landowner's holdings would be of sufficient interest to the gas companies but for the process of compulsory integration, which, if resisted by the people whose minerals and their land are being accessed, amounts to theft, plain and simple. Any one owner's property is but the gullet for the big gulp, and despite the efforts of coalitions to consolidate their land and their intentions, much of the swallowing will be accomplished by sucking up property owned by those who have not given their consent. This is an undemocratic act at the very least. Neither does it bear any resemblance to the libertarian view that you should be able to do whatever you want with your own property. Language contained in that party's platform related to environmental concerns contains the stern qualification that whatever you want should not cause harm to others. Since we all breathe the same air and drink roughly the same water, and all households were petitioned about whether they would approve of drilling in Caroline, and the clear majority said no, the Town Board has been charged to prevent a change that would be an aggressive violation of Caroline's comprehensive plan. You have given everyone who lives here ample time to inform themselves, raise objections, ask questions, and develop reasonable arguments about how extraction of shale gas could be carried out safely without ruining our quality of life. This has not happened persuasively or at all, other than to a small, self-interested minority of landowners who stand to make money. The gas industry, of course, stands to make a great deal more profit by using those landowners whose personal needs weigh heavily upon their views to do nothing less than vandalize our town and create schisms that will take us a long time to repair. It's time to tell them no emphatically, plainly, loudly, to enact a ban as swiftly as possible, and then get on to the business of addressing the needs of everybody who lives here, providing modest means for everyone to stay on and feel healthy, cared for, and safe. Thank you.
Hush Murray is taking the podium, and Janice Burton is on next.
I just want to thank everybody and reiterate what was said earlier, that I applaud both sides for being civil through this whole thing, no matter what side you're on. I have studied this issue. I've read everything I can get my hands on. I've talked face-to-face with many people on both sides, people who have been hurt, people who have gained. I went through, you know, all the decision-making I can. I think the older I get, the more I look towards the future. But I'm not looking towards my future. I'm looking towards my children's future. I'm looking towards all the juveniles' future. And as far as I can see, I have really no faith in the SGI F. I have no faith in my state or thy D E C at this point in time. I follow the money. It's scary. I'll tell you, I thank the Board for what they're doing. I want them to vote for this ban, and it's just the way that it is. I think that as things go on, you learn more and more and more and more. I feel this ban is really virtually our lifeline, our only lifeline, our only real stand as far as a local community to help steer whatever happens here. And to let this go and slip out of our fingers would be a very big mistake.